I call this January 7th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please be sure to silence your devices. Next on the pledge, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Charbonneau, would you please lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is roll call. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for tonight's meeting. Hornsett?
Present.
Charbonneau?
Here.
Hubbard?
Here.
Olman?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Verhees excused and Chair Griswold.
Here.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. However, there are no public present. So we will move on to the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve in a second.
I'll move to approve the agenda consent agenda in a second.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, who's second was you?
Second. Are there any changes to the agenda and consent agenda? Okay. With the deputy clerk?
Voting on the approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda. Sullivan?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Charbonneau?
Yes.
Olman?
Yes.
Hornsett?
Yes.
And Chair Griswold?
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda have been approved. And on that consent agenda and agenda is your approval of December 3rd, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting minutes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is special orders, presentations, and reports. There are no proclamations or awards. And next is the city administration report. Would the administration like to give a report?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Griswold. Just a few things today. Just our continuing plug for the public to fill out the comprehensive plan surveys. Again, we're going to have those open through most of the winter. And we did a pretty big blitz of community organizations before the holiday season. And so I think word's getting out pretty well. But if anyone's listening and you're part of a group that we haven't reached out to yet, feel free to reach out to our office because we'd love to come chat with you. Also, a reminder to the public to apply for your annual or seasonal business licenses now through the city clerk's office if you plan to operate a business in city limits during 2025. And at the end of February, we have three of our commissioners' terms which are expiring. And so just letting the public know if anyone's interested, as well as any of the expiring commissioners. The applications can be found on our website and those are turned into the city clerk's office. And if anyone's kind of curious about what it means to be a planning and zoning commissioner when we had a few vacancies last year, some of you showed up. We did like a kind of a presentation on what it what it means to be a planning and zoning commissioner. And so that presentation is also on our website. So feel free to check that out. And a reminder to the public that we do have a joint work session with city council that will be on Monday, January 27th at 5:30 PM before their 7:00 PM regular meeting, council meeting. And we'll be discussing some of the things that we've been discussing, you know, in the last couple of months here relating to marijuana establishment regulations, building height accessory dwelling units, and if we have time, get into some of the P and Z priorities for 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the agenda? Okay. Next is other reports and announcements. There are none. And presentations, there are no presentations. Next on the agenda is public hearings. The first public hearing is Resolution 2025-001. Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the title into the record?
Resolution 2025-001 recommending Seward City Council and Kenai Peninsula Borough approval of the preliminary plat of 4th of July Creek subdivision, Seward Marine Industrial Center, SMIC. That point of Block 10 excluding lots 1 and 2 located at 3207 Sorrel Road, creating tract A and B, Block 10, 4th of July Creek subdivision, SMIC, Spring Creek replat.
That is quite a mouthful. Thank you so much. I need a motion to approve and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-001.
I'll second.
Pick one. Administration, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. So some of the commission may remember the end of 2023 when we were doing the municipal lands inventory management plan update, we discussed the possibility of plating the land over in the SMIC area like this one you see and then the other ones in this packet. So if you turn to page 14, you'll see a simpler graphic of what this plat is proposing to do. It's taking the large parcel, large single parcel now that encompasses the Spring Creek campground, then the large harbor area, and then the 4th of July beach area south of the harbor. And it's going to divide it into two parcels. So the northern parcel will now just encompass the Spring Creek campground and adjacent tide lands, and then everything else will be in a parcel below that. And I know at the, in our municipal lands inventory and management plan, we did discuss the potential of including a city parcel north of this replat. It's cut out of the graphic here, so I'm sorry, you can't visualize that completely. And then potentially having a public access easement on the beach of the adjacent land owned by a private owner. However, those, that's not a feasible option at this time. And the adjacent city parcel wasn't included in this plat, but since it is its own parcel, it could be rezoned to park in the future. It doesn't need to be part of this plat. And that is one of the main goals of doing this subdivision is so that the city, the commission and the city council can then rezone tract A to park, to preserve it as a recreational use for the public. Now, I mean, or I guess a comment by our public works director, which then we pursued with the surveyor to see what we can do about that, was on the actual plat on page, these are, can be a little bit more complicated to read, but on page 16, you'll see within the Spring Creek campground, there's a 50-foot public access and utility easement. And the public, public works director requested that this be left as just a utility easement and not a public access easement to concerns of safety as this utility easement approaches into the beach area and tide lands. It's, there's been rocks placed over it and not really meant for people to access it like a typical, like what a public access easement is typically used for. It's primarily a utility easement. And then sorry for some additional laydowns to kind of help clarify the situation, but the one that I just barely handed out, which is the petition to vacate platted right-of-way, and there should be like three pages in it and it's stapled. So this kind of gives a better image, zoomed in image of this public access and utility easement on the back of the second page. So here are some of the other reasons why this would make sense to vacate this public access easement. If you look at where the public access easement is attached to Nash Road, there's a corner of it that crosses over what will now be tract B. And so it's not, the platted public access easement is not entirely in the tract A parcel. And then another reason is this campground area is not currently fully developed. It's basically just an open gravel area. If the city would want, wants to develop it more in the future, actually designating, you know, specific driveways or road access for vehicles to go down to the, to the beach, this would, this would have to be where that road is paved and put in. And so it, it basically gives the city a clean slate. If we remove the public access easement, we can then look at the property and develop it as we see, best see fit in the future, whether that's adding in a new public access easement somewhere else on the property that makes more sense, or not putting in a public access easement because the whole property will be zoned to park and accessible to the public in any manner. So those are some of the, the main reasons why we would advocate that, that this public access easement is vacated at this time. And the chair did bring up a concern prior to the meeting that there was a state patent that required this public access easement. And so we asked our surveyor to look into that since any requirement or restrictions on public lands would, would become, or you could be made aware of them through a title search. And so the surveyor did look through the title and did not find anything, any state restrictions that required this public access easement. And she did note, if you look on the next page in that laydown that I just provided you, on this plat, the Johnson's, well, I guess, sorry, not that. But anyway, plat 9727. Very, it's very, very small, so I'm sorry for that, but on note six.
I didn't bring a microscope, sorry.
So yeah, on note six, it says that there were public access easements vacated by this plat, which were approved by the DNR and the Kenai Peninsula Borough. And those public access easements that were vacated on this plat in 1997 were some of those public easements that were required with a state patent. And so this, our surveyor brought that up to show that there have been changes made to some of these historical requirements. And so it wouldn't bind the commission to leave that. There is still that freedom for the commission to vacate it or rededicate it to a different area or reduce the size of it, whatever they may see fit. But in general, our recommendation and that of public works would be to vacate it for now and then as the development progresses over there and, you know, we can work with parks and rec to see maybe perhaps where a more suited public access easement would be appropriate.
I have a quick question, Chair. If it's all right. So if you have the public access easement and you vacate that and that just becomes a utility corridor, where is the access for the public to be able to get? And there's going to be a separate area in there? Are we going to cordon off different areas? Or I guess I just want to be sure that, you know, we want to designate this whole area as a park. Is this going to be just, or is this just more of a pro forma kind of thing that, you know, we just don't use it as a access point?
Right, so the access, the public does not need a public access easement to access the property, especially when it's designated as a park. The purpose of this 50-foot public access easement is so that the public had a way through the property to get to the beach.
Right, right.
So with the property being rezoned entirely to park.
It won't make any difference?
Right.
Just want to confirm that, okay.
Any other questions, administration? Thank you. I'd like to point out that the surveyors, you see, is on this box.
Thank you.
Miracles of technology. I will now open the public hearing. And there is no one in the public, so I will now close the public hearing. And are there any comments from the commission?
Go ahead, I thought last night.
No, I was just going to say, seems pretty straightforward and we all talked about this earlier. I was the idea that designate this as a park from the regular law and set aside as a park. So I don't see the problem with that.
I concur. I think the thing is because we, we had that meeting on that and was, we wanted to make sure that this, this area would be designated as park as well as the other one and that this is one further step into ensuring this, you know, little plot of land is preserved to be that way. Eventually we'll get some signage in, which is what we were trying to do to make sure that we designate and everybody understands it. I didn't know anything about the easement, so thank you for the clarification on that. So I think that's pretty good.
Could you expand more on not including the other piece that you, that is also planned to be in park further?
That's a separate resolution.
No, I'm talking about the one.
North of Spring Creek?
Yeah, yeah, north of Spring Creek. You had intended to do that. What is the complications or the nuances there that are needed?
Yeah, sorry, the main complication is that the, the land is privately owned and, and so the city can't plat or, or provide a public access easement through private land without the consent of the owner.
I could, I could also help. This is day two of the AK land land survey. I could also help answer that question if need be.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is purely from memory. I discussed this target with Courtney. This is the April, May 2024. So this is just a overview from my understanding. I did perform quite a bit of research in the tract B, Johnson-Swift subdivision. I looked at the plat from, starting from 1918, it's actually started from the original state Alaska patent, the originally US survey, the US 1651, the other ADL, the Alaska tideline surveys included. And with that research in mind, there, there was not a time or there was not a place in the patent where there was a access easement dedicated within these meanders of the high tide. So I had difficulty actually finding something within those specific documents that states, hey, there was a public access easement bordering along tract B, Johnson-Swift subdivision. Now, there has been an increasingly amount of changes within those tide lands. So I guess there are state of Alaska laws regarding, you know, these properties and where the public should access. So for that specific plat, it just seemed unclear in the title. It would almost have, you would have to involve maybe any other expertise regarding if it does exist or where the high tide was, where the meanders were. In my fear, at that point, it was getting, it would be very expensive or just, you know, I would have to start looking at the cost. I know we didn't quite decide or look at the systemic cost to start deciding, you know, where are the tide lands? All these different questions regarding state law, but that is yet to be explored if we were to go that direction. I hope that gives some, I hope that helps.
Now, won't it, excuse me, I'm sorry. Won't it also involve, we probably have to involve possible purchase of the private property to get that easement or some arrangement, wouldn't it be?
So it really depends where these tide lands are falling, where their boundary lies, I guess, today or years before. So we have, you know, a situation where the boundary line could have been clearly, you know, within the trees and not on the easement when that subdivision was, you know, divided, right? So it, I think that there's a lot more to it than just buying a piece of their land and figure out, we need to know where those, those meanders are, most importantly, and if, you know, that overlaps or is in conflict with tract B, Johnson-Swift subdivision.
Yeah, there's a big difference between low tide and high tide for sure.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we can, it's amazing how far you can go on a nice low tide. On a high tide, you can, you don't have much bandwidth over there.
Yes, absolutely. And I definitely, and this was just, you know, this is from my memory and what we had a focus and thought about. And yes, I am happy to answer any further questions or, you know, Courtney wanting me to explore any more additional cost on, on getting a actual public access easement through there.
Can you tell us approximately how much area we're talking of a potential access point? I mean, it, that area, of course, depending on the tide, it could almost be, it spans quite a distance.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you cross Spring Creek, you go up and you're along the beach. Now, I know north of those two properties, there is an access easement, you know, fronting the Alaska tideline survey. I don't know if that access easement, you know, lies in the water or not, right? That's where I need to figure out is where their boundaries are, the private boundaries are. But yes, it's quite a distance. I know there's other easements along the, the lot that Seward Property LLC owns as well. I believe on some of the old ADLs, but I'd really like to verify some of this information I am often telling you as well, so.
So at this point, you haven't been contracted to do that yet or?
No, no, but we were exploring the idea and I was just hoping to tell you where it's off, you know, at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate all that research. Thank you so much.
Yep.
I understand that from the Alaska State Constitution, we are allowed, the public is allowed access to, to where the, like the beach rag grass is. So even though we're crossing, even though we're crossing private property, the public's allowed to do that. So the beach is actually still available to the public. We're not being cut off.
Yeah, it's just getting there. You don't, you don't want to be crazy.
At the end of this, this platted public utility and pedestrian access, that's, that ends in the water.
Yeah, that's fine here. I was just talking about the one that's farther north.
Well, then you can just walk along the beach.
Not on a certain tide, you can't get.
Well, I know, but you're not going to build a bridge over Spring Creek. That would. But I don't, I don't think that's relevant.
But then people have to drive all the way out there.
Well, that's not relevant to this resolution.
But I, I would be all for trying to do some research and look at some different access points. That'd be great.
I would like to make a motion to amend the plat name and add it to the section. And the plat name, to me, is, is a little bit misleading. So I would like to say, well, actually, I would like to make a motion to amend the, to update the plat replat name to da-da-da SMIC, Spring Creek Park replat, throughout for clarity and consistency with the 4th of July Creek Park plat. Do I hear a second for that?
I'll second, but I'm trying to figure exactly where you're talking.
So now we can have discussion. So currently.
Would you call it Spring Creek what?
So it would be called Spring Creek Park replat.
And you can see the name of the plat on page 16. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner in all, in all caps, that's the full legal name of the plat. So right now, it's 4th of July Creek subdivision, Seward Marine Industrial Center, Spring Creek replat. And what the chair is recommending is that we change that ending portion to Spring Creek Park replat.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Courtney. I think it just brings clarity to it and consistency and we'll get into 4th of July Creek name next, because I would like to add a clarifying name to that, too. So this is a pretty simple thing, Spring Creek Park replat. That's exactly what it is.
So you're adding park or emphasizing that.
Just, just the other little. Any other discussion on that?
No.
Okay. Would you, would the clerk please call for a vote on the amendment?
Calling for the amendment on Resolution 25-001, Court to be changed to Spring Creek Park replat. Sullivan?
Yes.
Olman?
Yes.
Charbonneau?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Hornsett?
Yes.
And Chair Griswold?
Yes.
That, the amendment has been approved.
Thank you. I have another amendment. I would like to amend the resolution to, to amend, let's see, to add another section, to add a 20-foot public access easement to this plat. And I don't think I want to specify where, but I'm thinking, well, parallel to Spring Creek would be obvious, just a nice straight 20 footer or somewhere else. And the reason, okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. The reason I would like to ensure that there is a platted public access is that four votes can change this from a park back to whatever, to industrial. And I don't want to turn access to trespass. Access to trespass is what's happened to us a lot where we have no longer had access to favorite places along the bay. We're not trespassing to get there. And this just seems like a good opportunity to, wherever it is, have it all be on this park plat to ensure that we have forever had public access to the beach. And it's just an insurance policy. I realize, well, once it's turned to park, we can access it anywhere and go to the beach. But four votes can change it. So just as a precaution, I would, I would like to, I would like to help out the public works director who does not want public access over his sewer line, but I'd also like to ensure that the public can get to the beach. Or how the line takes to vacate a plat.
Well, the plan is to vacate that, but maybe we need guidance from, from admin on, is it okay to leave something like that in there or that would, that's, it's going to be a mandate to the resolution or built in there somehow, even though we don't have an actual placement for it?
Yeah, no, the way that the chair has ordered it. Yeah, no, the way that the chair has ordered it would be appropriate that the commission requires a 20-foot public access easement on the plat to be determined by the surveyor and administration.
Mm-hmm. I don't want to dictate where, but I just want to make sure the public has access.
So, we're going to leave it up to the surveyor to dictate?
Well, survey and administration, like Doug, the Public Works Director would certainly be involved.
So, yeah, we would, we would meet with, uh, the Parks and Rec Director and, and Public Works Director and, as well as us and the surveyor, and then we can, um, pick a location that's more appropriate for that public access easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that once it becomes park, we don't need that. However, I, I do agree that it's prudent to have it.
But just in case.
And I like that administration and public works can pick the best spot for the, the property, because that's really, you know, what we need out of one pick spot. So, I agree.
And just, just thinking out loud here, other pedestrian accesses have been as narrow as 10 feet. So, maybe I could amend my motion to say a 10 or 20 foot, because maybe 10 would squeeze in there better than 20.
Well, sometimes you need to have vehicle access to, in case there's emergencies or whatever.
For the public.
Yeah, and for whatever other things.
Well, this is just for the public.
I, I know.
The city can do whatever they want.
I know, but if you need to get down there, I'm, I'm just looking for safety reasons, too.
Right. Well, our parking spaces are nine feet wide, and so 10 feet would accommodate a vehicle. I'm just trying to make it so that it happens.
That's what happens.
But other pedestrian access are 10, like when you go from private property to public property, it's a 10 footer. Um, I'd like to make that a motion. I'd like to amend my initial motion for more flexibility to say 10 feet.
10 to 20.
Or 10 to 20 feet.
And give everyone flexibility.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, that's a friendly motion.
Right. Any more discussion on that?
I just want a quick question. Are you going to put this into the actual resolution itself to ensure that that's there in perpetuity?
Being part of section.
So, you're going to do it?
Section three.
Okay.
Section three.
Make a new section three, okay? Got it.
Um, I did have a question. Do you guys don't mind? Are you, are you thinking it's a pedestrian public access easement, because the naming is, uh, very critical as well, so?
That, that would be fine.
Okay.
I think. That's what we were referring to. So, a 10 to 20-foot pedestrian public access easement. Any more questions or clarifications? Would you please call for a roll?
Okay. Voting on the Resolution 25 dash zero zero one on the amendment to the first amendment to change the, to add 10 to 20-foot public easement to plat, to the plat. Hubbard?
Are you sure it says pedestrian?
Pedestrian.
Public access.
Public access.
There you go.
Pedestrian public access. Okay. Hubbard?
Yes.
Hornsett?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Charbonneau?
Yes.
And Sheriff Griswold?
Yes.
So, before we vote on the main motion, are there any other amendments?
Can, can we talk about one other thing?
Sure.
If we are putting this, when we have put back on the table, the public access, this is a question for administration. Would it make sense to allow the utility easement to be changed to, if you're, if you're going to rework the, uh, public access? Would it make it easier on your end, I'd say? Or is this going to tie you into something undesirable?
Are you thinking 50 foot is pretty big, pretty wide?
Well, uh, no, I mean, it's, it's fine if this is the most optimal, like, utility easement, but if we're, if they're, if we're giving them, you know, access or authority to put the public easement wherever they see fit, maybe they want to rework it. I'm just throwing that out there.
It's over the sewer line?
It's already in.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It goes to the outfall for the prison.
All right, well, that's pretty, uh...
It's, it's in there.
Okay. When I read the packet, it sounded like there wasn't much.
I know, there is a sewer, a very important sewer line under there.
So, then, how can we vacate it if we didn't?
We, we didn't vacate the utilities. We vacated the public.
The easement.
Yes.
Oh.
The utility easement is still there.
Right. Okay. Public utility easement with a sewer line is still there.
Okay.
But you raised a good point. Most of our utility easements are 20 feet. So, if we requested, would it be possible to request a reduction from 50 feet to 20 feet? And that would give us space for that 10 foot? That's possible?
That is possible, yeah.
Um, Stacy, do you, do you see that being possible? Because then it would fit right along the drainage ditch, which is Spring Creek. But I don't know exactly where the sewer.
Um, it is definitely possible to add the pedestrian public access easement on top of the 50-foot public access or pu, or 50-foot utility easement. So, there, there would be no, um, there's no conflict in, in putting two easements to overlap each other. Um, now, if the utility company somewhat had to come and do something with the sewer, um, I mean, I just, uh, it's, it's common to have easements overlap each other quite a bit. I did speak to Doug earlier today and, um, I think he, he actually wanted it to be labeled a 50-foot sewer easement, um, just so it's not an actual utility easement and other utilities join that area, but, uh, he, you know, didn't say much else about that, so. I mean, it, we could, I guess, say it's a 40-foot, uh, public or a utility easement and then put the 10-foot pedestrian easement between the Spring Creek and the, the easement. Um, if, if needed.
I think that would make, um, the Public Works Director happy not to have the pedestrian easement on top of the utility easement.
Okay. Okay.
So, what's that?
Yeah.
Don't they get mad?
I think they can figure it out.
They know our intent.
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's not, remember that one. So, is everyone ready for a vote on the main motion?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Voting on the main motion, Resolution 25 dash zero zero one. Hornsett?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Charbonneau?
Yes.
And Sheriff Griswold?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Resolution 2025 zero zero two. Deputy clerk, would you please read this, the title into the record?
Recommend, Resolution 25 dash zero zero two, recommending Seward City Council and Kenai Peninsula Borough approval of the preliminary plat of Track B, Block 10, Fourth of July Creek subdivision, SMIC, Spring Creek replat, Lot 3, Block 8, Fourth of July Creek subdivision, SMIC Seward Ship Dry Dock replat, and Lot 4A dash 4, Block 7, Fourth of July Creek subdivision, SMIC, Jag replat, located at 3207, 3311, and 3314 Sorrel Road, creating tracks B dash 1 and B dash 2, Block 10, and lots 4A dash 5 and 4A dash 6, Block 7, Fourth of July Creek subdivision, SMIC Park replat.
Thank you. Very well done.
Has park in there.
Yeah, but we'll get to that. Um, so, next on the agenda is a public hearing for Resolution 2025 zero zero two. And I will now open the public hearing.
I need a first and a second. Oh, I skipped a little bit there. I need a motion to approve and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash zero zero two.
I'll second.
Thank you. There was a motion. Administration, do you have any comments?
Yes, thanks, Sheriff Griswold. First, I just want to make a point for legislative history and anyone else who has thoroughly reviewed the packet, but on page 35 and 36, the application that was included for this portion of the packet, um, I'm sorry, is incorrect. So, I included as a laydown the correct application, just so that legislative history has it, um, correct that we did receive the proper application for this plat.
Is it this one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, on page 32, you'll see the graphic showing the proposed plat is taking two parcels. Um, so, the first one is that large parcel primarily and comes in tidelands that is, or that was, Track B in the Spring Creek Park replat that we just reviewed. And it would divide Track B into two tracks, B1, B2. And Track B2 would encompass what is currently Lot 3, um, which is just a funky-shaped lot there that, um, has the parking for the Fourth of July Beach and the, the trail access down to the beach right now. So, that would all be one parcel, the intent being then, of course, to rezone that to park and, and have it preserved as a recreational use area. Then the second lot that is being subdivided in this plat is, um, just east and north of Sorrel Road there, where Jag has primarily parking for, um, their employees. And we're subdividing out a portion of that, that lot there on the southwest corner that can then be designated by the commission to be parking for Fourth of July Beach. And that's the primary, um, primary things happening in this plat. There is a five-foot utility easement that'll be vacated along the former Lot 3 on the beachside. There are no utilities in that easement, so it's just removing something that is not necessary anymore. And then our Public Works Director did recommend that, um, we look at the cul-de-sac at the end of Sorrel Road and verify that it was, um, that it had the, the 50-foot radius that's required for a cul-de-sac. And so, in the resolution, I had stipulated that a requirement from the commission would be to ensure that the, that the cul-de-sac was a complete cul-de-sac with a 50-foot, um, radius. But when the surveyor did, um, further analysis and looked into it for us, that cul-de-sac, although it doesn't look like a complete circle, does have the required, um, 50-foot radius, so we can strike that requirement from the resolution. It, the preliminary plat as shown, um, is okay to move forward.
Okay. Any questions for administration?
Uh, I do, Sheriff Griswold. I saw that with the, I think it said to put in, make sure, put in a, a cul-de-sac. But I was looking at how, how Car Sorrel, uh, Sorrel went through, and it goes right up on Delphin. Is that where he, is that where the, the cul-de-sac is? Because that goes all the way down around and up.
So, the, yes, sorry, so the cul-de-sac would be, um, let's see.
That's the key.
Yeah, the, right, right there where the Fourth of July parking, beach parking is currently.
It looked like on the map, it looked like it went pa, up and past. Maybe I was just looking at it the wrong way.
The other side of Sorrel, by the Jag gate.
Yeah. Okay.
Not the other one. Not the other side.
Okay. And swung around. Okay. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Now, um, I will now open the public hearing. And there is no public here, and so I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the commission? Today, would like to make an amendment to strike number one?
To strike?
Yeah. So, that's the cul-de-sac, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, hold for it.
Okay. I would like to make an amendment to strike, uh, number one. Do I have to spell it out?
Yes.
To strike section one that says the commission hereby recommends that a full cul-de-sac be planted at the end of Sorrel Road.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Either way. We're, we're... A race here. Whoever's there.
Um, go ahead, Brandon, you can discuss.
Uh, well, yeah, it's, sounds like we already have more than a cul-de-sac there. It doesn't have the cul-de-sac shape, but it meets the 50-foot radius, 100-foot diameter.
50 foot.
Uh...
50 foot diameter.
100, 100 foot diameter, 50 foot radius.
Correct. Sorry.
As on the laydown, um, and, yeah, that's, seems good to me.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I agree.
Okay. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Motion, or, sorry, Resolution 25 dash zero zero two, to amend, um, number one, section one on the resolution. Almond?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Charbonneau?
Yes.
Hornsett?
Yes.
And Sheriff Griswold?
Yes.
That amendment has been approved.
Thank you. I would like to make another amendment, and that would be to update the replat name to Fourth of July Beach Park throughout for clarity and consistency with a Spring Creek Park replat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion, it's, um, pretty much the same, that this, instead of just calling it Park replat, we would be consistent with Spring Creek Park replat and call it Fourth of July Beach replat. Fourth of July Beach.
Park.
Park.
Yeah. I think it's ready for clarification, because as soon as you, you know, you say park, it sort of zeros in where you're talking about, because there's so many things. When you have SMIC, you have, um, uh, sewer chips, you have a variety of other things going through there. When you say park, you automatically know where it's going.
And then by saying Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Beach.
And park.
You know exactly which part. Yes. Throughout the resolution, all I'm seeing is Fourth of July Creek. Right. So, it needs to say Fourth of July, well, the title of the replat needs to say Fourth of July Beach Park replat.
And that's just at the end of the, the name. So, the full name would have Fourth of July Creek subdivision, Seward Marine, uh, Industrial Center, Fourth of July Beach Park replat.
Correct.
That helpful?
It's redundant, but that's legal descriptions for you.
Good times.
Any other discussion?
Uh, I'm sorry, but I, on the previous, um, amendment, we said Spring Creek Park replat. We didn't include beach, but we can go back and clarify that. We can call it Spring Creek. We didn't, we didn't include beach.
Right.
I just, maybe you could, I think that was the intent, so we can, I don't know if you have to go back. I'm sorry to bring it up now.
Well, that one has so much more uplands, that Spring Creek Park encompasses the campground, the uplands, and the beach.
Okay.
So, that's, and this is mostly a little bit of uplands and then beach.
Okay. I just wasn't sure what your intent was. Okay.
Right. Thank you. Are we ready for the vote? Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Resolution 25 dash zero zero two, amending to update the name to Fourth of July Creek subdivision, Fourth of July Beach Park replat. Yes. Okay. Hornsett?
Yes.
Charbonneau?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Sheriff Griswold?
Yes.
That amendment has been approved.
Thank you. And now, we're ready for, any other discussion? We're ready for a, a vote on the main motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 25 dash zero zero two. Charbonneau?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Hornsett?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sheriff Criswell?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. And then next is new business. And first we have resolution twenty-two thousand five zero zero three. Would the clerk please read the title and the record?
Resolution twenty-two thousand five dash zero zero three recommending Seward City Council and Kenai Peninsula Borough approval of the preliminary plat of lots one, two, and three, block ten, original townsite of Seward located at two thirty-seven and two thirty-five Fourth Avenue, creating lot one A, block ten, Seward original townsite, Kwabi Park replat.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve. In a second.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two thousand five zero zero three.
In a second. Administration, do you have any comments?
Yes. This replat is a pretty simple replat. It doesn't require a public hearing because it's just vacating the interior lot lines. We had initially thought about putting it on the consent agenda because it is so straightforward, but just wanted to speak to it and clarify for anyone listening that Kwabi Park is not changing. The zoning will remain park, its use will remain the same, the boundaries will remain the same. It's just the interior lot lines from the historic Seward townsite plat that are being vacated, so that it'll be one nine-thousand square foot lot now.
Thank you. Any questions for administration? Are there any comments from the commission?
It's pretty straightforward, just housekeeping.
Tidies things up nicely.
And it's another project on the Muniz Palantus plan that we're checking on. Really exciting. Okay, would the deputy clerk please call for the vote?
Voting on resolution twenty-five dash zero zero three. Sullivan?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Charbonneau?
Yes.
Hornsah?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
And Sheriff Criswell?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Thank you. Next is other new business. The first item is a discussion on building height overlay. Administration, you have any comments?
Sure, so we put this discussion item on the agenda to just fully capitalize on the commission's time, since we don't have a lot of work sessions before our joint work session with city council, and we wanted to have maybe a little bit more substance to what we brought to them regarding the building height. So we wanted to provide this opportunity for the commission to look at the city of Seward zoning map and, or if you want to bring up the borough parcel map to just look at the imagery, whichever you prefer, and maybe identify areas within the city of Seward where building height overlay would be appropriate. And so at our last work session, the commission discussed that they would prefer to leave the general height for all zoning districts at thirty-four feet, but then look for potential building height overlays for two areas. So one area that would allow for buildings up to thirty-eight feet, so more flexible height for three-story buildings, and then a second area that would potentially allow buildings up to fifty feet, which would allow for four-story buildings. So those are the two overlays that the commission can look at right now, one for thirty-eight feet and one for fifty feet, and which areas would be appropriate for that within Seward.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Well, I think that this really deserves a work session. I'm reluctant to make any hard comments until we have a public that wants, that is here and wants to talk about it. I think that this potentially is a good idea, but it's a big idea. So I don't think it needs a lot of thought before we actually do anything about it, which we're not going to do anything about tonight, but.
Want to get organized for the joint work session? I mean, does the, does the overlay just have to do with the zone?
No, it just has to do with the area. Like, we could say, south of such and such street is this. Between this and that is this.
Right. I'd propose a couple, like, just general areas for us to think about. I mean, obviously, we're not making decisions, but like some potentially maybe, I mean, it could be. Probably not everybody will agree, but alongside the Seward Highway, particularly near where we've been talking about the new multi-police-fire, one of the proposed sites for, I guess it's not the one they were choosing, but alongside the Seward Highway, kind of towards the Three Bridges, doesn't seem to block anybody's view. I'd love for the public to comment on that, too, but that could be one area to consider.
So between, so based on roads, like north of Pinlock or DeCrave, like what, just kind of?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, kind of that area.
Or between Sea Lion and DeCrave?
Even, yeah. Yeah, so we'll just, we'll start with bigger. We'll say from Sea Lion north, you know, just to throw it out there.
And what height are you thinking?
Again, I, I don't want to get into specifics, but I just want to start people's brains, like, just go home and think about it, you know?
Right.
What, what you think would be there, except for maybe nothing, but at least, you know, that's one area. And then, you know, I think across the bay, too, is near SMIC. I think that's an area we can think about. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about personally what wouldn't block anybody and has potential. And so I think those are like some pretty simple areas, in my opinion, but yeah, please, anybody else is welcome chiming in.
Could do something like south of B.
South of B?
Like everything south of B Street.
In town? Should stay through, through and forth.
B Street or?
Yeah, B, south of B.
South of B.
Like B and south.
Right, no, I guess I was thinking about even, you know, right where, you know, basically, not sure of the name of the street, draw a blank, but the one near Red, Rad Wagon?
Van Buren.
Van Buren, yeah, Van Buren, south. That's what I was thinking, is that's sort of the downtown, starts the downtown area. I was thinking of that, because then you have the big old parking lot and the hotel and stuff. That's sort of a demarcation line for me.
Yeah, but then we've talked about against the mountain first.
Oh, okay.
Right, could be.
We talked about that, but it sounded, somebody had mentioned that was.
Zonings don't match. Zonings don't match. I was looking at that earlier.
Is that?
Like, a lot of that.
Is.
Or one?
Or one, it's in a bunch of that area.
We might have a conflict then, because if people get zoning districts and, you know, and then our, their overlay districts may be incompatible. So we may have to decide, are we going to go by overlay or zoning? Because then zoning would might, it could get a little wonky, because we have a lot of spot zoning, too. So.
Or just for doing area.
Yeah, that's what the overlay was sort of thinking of.
I mean, I think, I think the overlay has value because it's not attached to the zoning. And just because you are in R1 and have the zone, or have the overlay four or fifty foot, like, you know, zoning doesn't necessarily have to be forever, as, as things change. Like zoning can change, and sure, maybe that's not the plan right now, but having the option to say, yeah, it wouldn't offend anybody to put something here.
Right, you can look within the.
That's the value of the overlay, but.
Yeah, if you look in the overlay district, you see if it makes sense if somebody wants to do that in that area, if it's an R1 area in the overlay. If it's a mixed bag of residentials and you have an overlay district and you can take a look at it and say, well, this is what we could potentially put here, and maybe evaluate if it is. But I don't know if we would have permitted outright, or would that have to be through a?
You could, you could do both. You could have an overlay district of a certain area, but then only allow in certain zoning districts in that overlay.
There you go.
And require CUP.
That's what I was thinking, the CUP would be, give us a little bit of a, you want to alleviate too much of bureaucracy. It'd like to be nice to put everybody in one area, but it seems like we have such a hodgepodge of, of zones and people's wishes in those areas. It's, it might be hard. I think, I think a good idea to start with the overlay district and then micro and sort of zoom in on that afterwards. I think that would be helpful.
I do like the idea of retaining the thirty-four-foot height south of Van, south of Van Buren.
Yep.
And that takes care of something against Mount Marathon in a residential neighborhood.
I think we should also think about making SMIC more than one spot. There's a lot of room out there.
There is a property on Vaticato Avenue that, as the zoning plan, is city-owned property. I was thinking, well, maybe that could be a place for, I, I don't think fifty-foot anywhere, but higher than thirty-four feet.
That's right on the corner of that land there, isn't that down Vaticato? If you're driving down Vaticato on the left.
Yeah, it's Resource Management. Turn, you turn left on Vaticato, it's where they were composting the.
Yeah, that whole area there.
Wrenches. It's thirty acres. There might be water and sewer limitations to put anything really, you know, being there.
Water and sewer is over there, so.
It is, but it would probably involve, but, but that's not.
Yeah, that's not.
Probably our concern, but it would put additional motivation to have another water tank and expand sewer system, which would be required for a lot of development over there.
If you do a lot of, yeah.
Right, but that, I was thinking, okay, so we'd see it kind of end on from Seward, and it's tucked up against the bench and against the mountain on Ellis. And it could serve the prison, it could serve the coast guard, if they wanted to live where they work. I don't know if they do, but that might be a place for a larger apartment building to accommodate housing needs over there.
That would be nice, actually.
And then I think about, okay, but the road is very narrow and icy and how much congestion would that road take?
Nash Road?
Nash Road.
Yeah, but Nash Road hasn't had to work down to it for a very long time, or a proper study on it for a very long time. So as things get developed over there, that's going to have to happen, and it's going to have to change. But that's not our area, so.
Okay, except our area is public safety.
No, 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 I mean the, like, lot of the road over there.
Right.
So the state needs to do a new study on it.
It's our road.
Of course it is.
It's a city's road.
All the way through, I think it's all the city's road, is it? Because it's.
There's a section where it turns into state.
Yeah, it goes from.
Wherever the speed limit goes up.
It goes to where, it goes to where Old Afgnac is. That city up to Afgnac, from Afgnac out to, just before Spring Creek, I think it becomes, it's state. And then following on, I think it goes into, back to the city, I believe. I might be wrong, but I just know.
It's interesting on the U K P D, it shows who has maintenance.
Oh, maintenance.
When you click on it, who owns it.
But either way, as things get developed over there, the road will need to be addressed, so we can do that.
So I was thinking, okay, if we need a taller building, a use over there that's needed is housing, so maybe that would be something to look at.
To change that for an overlay for building height.
Yeah, for a four-story building there. But I was looking through our, not only our zones, but our considerations. What I think we need to consider about raising the height is that it's higher than thirty-four feet, the sprinkler system is needing to our rated ceilings, an elevator is required for three stories. Impacts are privacy, light, snow storage, views, landscaping, neighborhoods, small-town atmosphere, quality of life, and slow versus fast lifestyle. densities, traffic, congestion, safety, parking, tsunami inundation zones, flood zones, steep slopes, rock slides, avalanche. Infrastructure demands, roads, water, sewer, electricity, internet, and maintenance. Commercial use versus residential use versus seasonal use. And note that residential dwellings are dispersed throughout all zones, including industrial and institutional. So to, to go up higher will increase densities and will impact many things that I value about our small town.
And we'll address housing issues, though, housing crisis. Like, I think it's worth considering the thirty-eight, pretty widespread to consider it. And I, I will say, as we prepare for the joint work session, we'll have an hour and a half, right? Because they have a meeting at seven.
We'll probably have a little break in there, so.
So we don't have a lot of time, you know, here, so we're covering a lot, right? So I think we, if we want to have a good discussion, or at least present them with the information, the more, you know, we're going to be talking about marijuana, maybe we go building height next, if we have a plan to give them kind of what we're thinking, and then ADUs, just kind of being realistic, on time.
And our priorities.
Yeah, so, but it's a great opportunity, so I think it's just important to be organized, to be like, look, here's what we're thinking here. I mean, that table with marijuana should be very easy for them to see. But I think with building height, we could get fairly specific, you know?
I'm reluctant to get specific with them without a full work session on it with the public. I feel like skipping a step.
I think we should throw out some.
Yeah, we kind of.
Throw out some proposals.
Yeah.
Proposals are very specific, I mean, it was a good thing. Like, we talked about where proposal as in, is this a good idea to support, you know, overlay districts like this?
Yeah.
And potentially these heights. I'm okay with that, but I don't think I'm okay with coming up with them and then proposing those to them.
How about just ideas? Like, I have an, I'm thinking anything west of First Avenue that a higher building could be considered. It's not going to impact the view shed. It's kind of like the last building, or the first building standing, so as long as there's nothing else behind it.
Yeah, that is a good point, Commissioner Charbonneau. You know, these are specific things. We're considering two overlays, one at thirty-eight to get the three, to get the three stories, and one at fifty to get the four stories. Point out that that, it's just a view shed issue now, like, I'm going to, the fire chief made clear, so get that information across.
Yeah, I, to go along with that, I think what'd be sort of good, too, is the fact is, you put the general, you know, for the work session, we're looking, say, to the council and saying, we're looking at, you know, thirty-eight and fifty, because of A, B, C, and D, what we were talking about, that we somewhat concur with, and then the fact is that we'd say, these are thoughts of areas of overlays. We don't get into the weeds, we just talk about this, and then we will have subsequent work sessions to bring the public in to get their feedback. So we can tell that the, the council, these are what we're looking at, this is how we're, you know, we want to progress, there's, you know, we don't want anything to get locked in concrete now because we need more public input, because especially view sheds, the building heights, is going to affect everybody in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, nor is there time to get.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I guess what's being clear to me, even if we just present what we have here, is valuable.
Sure, because then we can get their, their feedback and say, well, what do you think? And we will hold the work sessions, or, you know, for the, you know, for the community to come in and provide them, you know, their expressed, you know, viewpoints, and then we can knock it around some more and then bring it to the council for, you know, final, you know, decision.
Having that, you know, the survey info where like a lot of public was in favor of thirty-eight, that'd be good to just have, right? You know, yeah. I don't know, thirty-eight, yeah, that's great. I'm just trying to be organized for that joint work session so that we're being efficient, you know, because we're covering a lot, but.
You want to bring something to them, but not so much that you're in the weeds if they shut you down. You want something that they can take.
Let's talk more about this.
Know all of this, and then we go forward.
Yeah. I don't know, but the thirty-four to thirty-eight, like, that's only four feet. And it gets, you know, like, we've seen public talk about how getting that comfortable three-story is a big deal for penciling out building projects. I'm inclined, you know, I want to talk more about it, but I'm inclined to overlay that fairly openly.
I think that's a discussion for a work session.
Sure, yeah.
To avoid having the topic become a work session at council.
Yeah.
I'd like to be sure that we nail down the marijuana code, that we've polished that pretty well. We've had a lot of public input, and I think what we have is a really good product. So I'd like to be sure we present that.
That's first, yeah.
Yeah. Building height, I'd like to maybe put that last, so that we are sure we have time for discussion of our priorities, which we haven't really discussed yet, but coming up. ADUs, I don't think we're ready to, to deal with ADUs with council yet. But the marijuana thing, I feel really good about.
I would like to talk, in talking about housing, I think there still is that rural residential issue out at forty acres that really needs to be addressed.
Right.
And I think we should put. And I think we should push on that and emphasize that, because that's, that's a low-hanging fruit there, and it could be quick and easy.
Right, it had momentum and then it kind of just dropped out of sight.
Yeah, well, it's, it's gotta be in their core, but we want, we need to push that on because it's not in our purview, but it's in their purview, but it's still a housing stumbling block.
We do subdivisions now, so it is.
It's just the deed to needing to, the requirement to needing to connect with sewer and water, city sewer and water, and if we can get that area, and other areas, too, correct? Get them freed up from that, or have a different.
I mean, with the limited time, I would encourage the commission to stick with things under your purview. Like, that is not under your purview.
Okay, not even because it's Title 60.
I mean, if you want to make, I mean, I think you all should feel free to share your thoughts at that meeting, and if you want to make that comment, I think that's fine. I would avoid making it a discussion item.
Right.
Because that's not what we do.
Right, okay.
Well, Commissioner Calhoun had that going, and then he's off, so we're losing that. That's where the momentum was, and it really shouldn't die, so I will be making a comment about it, for sure, so.
So back to building height, which is what we're supposed to be discussing right now. Is it consensus that we're willing to bring forward a general, a general discussion that we're thinking about 38 feet and 50 feet, and general ideas about overlays where that would be appropriate, but we need to have work sessions?
I think that would be a good way to go, because I would not, wouldn't want to lock them into anything right now until we have public input. I think the marijuana thing, I think we've sort of hammered into the ground enough for them to chew on a little bit. I think the priorities, I think what we should review what our priorities were last time and see if we accomplished those, and how much we want to possibly either resurrect them if we haven't, or, and just, you know, jump from there, because we have to look at our priorities reflective of our comprehensive plan.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that. I want to still also make sure, because we haven't decided to drop it before, that we potentially are thinking three areas, three heights.
That's true.
So I don't want it to make it seem like we've already decided.
Right, right.
Otherwise, yes, I'd agree with that, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, the commission is wanting to keep things more open, but still present something to council, perhaps maybe just presenting the concept of how does council feel about having overlays and the heights within those overlays being 38 feet in one, 50 in another? Maybe have this discussion with the council about if they're comfortable with those heights, if they would do different heights? And then maybe potentially ask them if they have certain areas that they feel strongly about restricting to 34 feet, because that seems, you know, instead of asking, what areas do you want to see taller, it might be easier to get.
You provide examples in areas that you might suggest for them, that they might give you feedback on, because the last thing you want to go in is just even leave it open, and then you have no dialogue, because they don't have the same frame of reference at the time that you have. And I think you want to have something that they could provide some meaningful dialogue or discussion back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
But I, yeah, I would concur with that.
We do need to emphasize the reason and the importance of going up 38 feet.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that came from the public.
So then the commission could present the reasonings and the background for why you've chosen 38 feet and 50 feet, and then the council could then provide their input on whether they think that's okay to move forward with those two heights, or if they want to see something different.
When we've done joint work sessions before, we've actually presented, you know, the various areas, the chair would provide the information, and then they would respond, and then the other commissioners and the council members would provide their thoughts and feedback. But you sort of take the lead on one thing, you lay out for everybody else, you give them an opportunity to respond, and then you have the discussions that go from there.
I feel very uncomfortable bringing this forward at our joint session. I think we had so many other topics under our priorities. This is not ready. I just don't feel it's ready, and I don't really want to go right to the top for their input before we've discussed it with the public. It just doesn't seem like we're doing the right process when we suddenly have this mini work session with council before we've even had it with the public.
Building height? We've had that with the public.
Yeah, we've had at least three work sessions with the public. And I think the purpose of this work session with the city council is to make sure that the commission doesn't waste any more time, because you have spent time discussing it with the public.
Yeah.
And we've been talking to the public in our office, saying that this is coming, but if council is gonna just say, nope, we don't want to deal with changing building height, then we need to know. And so that's the purpose.
And when we requested this joint work session, that was part of.
It was.
And plus, we have people that are out on the wings waiting to build and wanting to change up their designs and.
They're all hotel owners, wanting to commercialize sewer.
But yeah, so even if it's as simple as, does city council want us to continue pursuing this discussion of building height? Then that, then that would give the commission direction to continue spending your time doing this, but if the council's like, nope, we're not gonna entertain this, that's good information.
And that's a good way to do it, where it's almost just like, very like, could take very little time, couple minutes, you know, 38, 50.
We, as the commissioner, you, as the commissioner, are looking at different ways to help with the housing issues. One of them is raising the building height. This is the conversations we've had so far, what is council open to potentially changing the building height? If no, great, then you know your answer, and then, if yes, then get some feedback from them or direction, and then we continue on with more work sessions.
I think that's good. And they could say no, and then, you know.
So getting back to what we're actually supposed to be discussing is the building height overlay, and the ideas have been presented. Keep it 34 south of Van Buren, have a higher building height in certain areas like north of Hemlock.
I think you said Sea Lion.
Sea Lion?
I would say north of Hemlock.
Somewhere in there.
Hemlock, one of those two.
You got a lot of housing going on between Sea Lion and Hemlock.
With the idea that we're trying to preserve and protect our view shed? And then across the bay, that city-owned parcel, 30-acre parcel against the mountain might be appropriate for a higher, for a rezon to allow residential or commercial housing?
Is there resource management over there all now, isn't it?
It is resource management there.
If you don't want to get that specific.
I don't want to get that specific.
Yeah, like.
The overlays, are you interested?
I don't want to name streets.
Okay.
You know, like, because I.
Actually, though, we are now discussing building height and overlays. I'm not talking about what we're gonna take to council. I'm trying to summarize what we have discussed about building height and overlays, because that's the topic we're supposed to be discussing.
I'd like my proposal to be acknowledged as well. You know, anything west, farthest west of First Avenue, consider a higher building height.
Up against a mountain?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that doesn't, you know, I mean, Juno does the same thing up against a mountain, not that we're gonna be Juno.
And that could be on both sides, both sides of the bay.
As a resident of First Avenue, I'd be highly objectioned if I do that.
Is there any really, is that all city?
I assume it's three stories.
Yeah.
And it completely blocks the view and sunlight.
From the other homes.
Northern, western bound.
There's no view and sunlight up in that canyon anyway.
That's why they appreciate anything they can get. But, yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to have something.
Is that all city land up there behind First Avenue, isn't it?
There's no city land.
So that whole, that mountainous area there is all?
Up at Little Canyon?
No, not Little Canyon, but just anything west of.
Across the street from First Avenue, west of First Avenue. It's owned by the hospital, which is city land, and it's owned by the certificated healthcare center.
Right.
And then it's all homes.
All the homes, right, all through there, but anything, there's nothing behind there. So you're just, you're just referring just on First Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay. I was thinking it's going up, working up the mountain somehow.
Yeah, the side against the mountain, I would be open to going higher there. That's no view shed issue.
It is for me, that's why.
She lives on First Avenue.
It's for you.
Look west, you don't look east.
I look west.
Okay. You know, the view, okay, yeah, view is relatively like.
It is totally.
But you're, yeah, so a little higher, little, goes a little four feet higher or sixteen feet higher.
You're gonna have 34 feet anyway, yeah.
I hear you.
And with that height, we get higher density, we get more traffic, we get more this and that, so it's one of the oldest residential neighborhoods in Seward, First and Second Avenue. I just like that small-town view that we have.
We're a recurring theme here for our priorities. I think we need to leave the small-town theme somehow in there.
I love it, when you come down from Anchorage, it's like, oh, crazy busy, you got 60 miles an hour, and then it's 55, and then it's 45, and it's 35, and then pretty soon you're 20, you know?
And then you're packed up, starting in May, June.
Yeah, I like bringing it down, you know? I like that small-town. So I think it's important, though, to consider where would it be appropriate? I just don't agree that along First Avenue.
Well, yeah, we don't have to agree, but I think.
Right, I know, you don't have to agree.
I, I.
Right.
You'll still be able to have a nice view of the bay. And there was Wesleyan there at one time, and it was, it was three, it was two, three stories? Yeah.
Okay, good discussion on First, other areas.
So north of Sea Lion or north of Hemlock? Want to think about that?
Now, it is sort of busy, because you have the rec camp on Sea Office Sea Lion as well, and, and the schools, maybe you should move it over to beyond Hemlock.
Would you like the fire department, which is south of Hemlock, to be hired? Or the public works building to be hired?
Probably.
Because that would, that would be affected by Sea Lion versus Hemlock.
It would be, yeah.
To Sea Lion.
Yes, because they're, all of these are like one complex there, you have the electrical, then you have the public works, and then you have the fire department.
So envision 40 feet, 50 feet. Does that, does that seem like an okay place?
That's awfully big for a small town.
Fifty, yeah.
Fifty, I know.
Maybe across the bay, we do 50 feet over here. I don't think we allow 50 feet on this side.
Let's just discuss that. Is there any place that would be appropriate for 50 feet?
Yeah, I think that's a good question.
You know, I don't, I don't think we should even think about 50 feet.
And how tall the electrical?
I'm shocked how high 50 feet is.
Yeah, how tall is the electrical building?
The which one?
How tall is the electrical building?
Which electrical building?
Our building off of Sea Lion.
Oh, that's not very tall. I don't think that's.
It must be 34 feet or less.
Yeah, that's pretty tall.
I was wondering about the Jag tent, how high is that?
That's sort of a special deal. It's huge.
Right, it's, yeah.
But it would, that's a, that's a frame of reference.
Bulk fuel tanks are 40 feet high.
Okay.
And they're kind of down, so they don't look quite as high. That's pretty high, if you drive up an Alameda and look up, 40 feet is pretty tall.
Alameda is across there?
I'm sorry. On the subdivision, behind Shoreside Petroleum, it's 15 feet.
Oh, yeah, those are 40 feet, the tanks?
Right, okay. I personally don't see any place in Seward Sea Lion that's where 50 feet would be appropriate.
Pretty tall.
I'm fine with it.
I'm, I'm open to 50 in spots, but it's like, that's to get the apartment buildings that we've identified really help in sewer housing. I don't know where these spots are, it's hard for me to, you know, there's a lot of different neighborhoods and areas in Seward. But I just think that there are some where view shed wouldn't be affected, or, yeah. But you don't know that you're gonna get apartment buildings. I don't know if there's a way to kind of do that, like with a program or something. That's why I don't want to drop that, because it's, it's too, it's a chance to address housing in a major way, you know?
A lot of these would have to have a CUP of some sort, we wouldn't allow some of these on the rate, so there'd have to be an evaluation if that were the case.
Right.
Parking's always a thing with all those things, so it would have to be, if it's allowed, it would have to be done carefully, obviously, with the other restrictions or requirements that we have for all those buildings.
There'd be many steps, like with my visual restrictions, that's almost what I need to see, like, okay, right there, and then we can really break it down, but you guys are gonna kind of see it in the whole town, so.
But 50 feet would be tough in town.
There's a lot of great animation software nowadays where we can do some real-life overlays.
Fly in and.
Yeah.
360 it, right.
So it sounds like we are still not ready. So.
It would be good to find out how high.
50 feet is?
The shelter over Jag is.
Yeah, that's high.
And then, let's say it's 50 feet, and then picture, because you can see that really well from the side of the bay, picture a structure that high and move it over against Alice.
Yeah.
Hopefully sideways, so they could, 30 acres, they could go wherever they want, but would you like to see something that high over there, for example? It would be in our view shed as much as looking at the prison as all lit up at night, and there would just be additional light pollution over there by our, on Alice. So that would be a visual.
Well, the council may not even, I mean, that's what we're discussing now, but even the council may not want that either, so.
Or they might say, well, that's probably gonna be, you know, the council, like, right here, we have several different opinions, you know, we don't have a unanimous opinion on this, we probably have several different opinions, but some may be in favor, because we see a chance to address the housing crisis. I mean, do we agree that it is a chance to, what do we think of, I don't know, we're getting.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's our effort.
On the administration, please give us some numbers of high buildings in Seward and structures, so we have a better understanding of height and can visualize it. So the SMIC structure, that's probably the tallest thing I know of in Seward.
We have one work session prior to the following one, don't we?
How high is the Sea Life Center's roof, that white sail?
Yeah.
That's, you could be sure. Do you let school just take?
Well, the gateway is 34, right? We know that.
What's edge?
The gateway is 34, right? Yeah.
Gateway'd have to be 34, 360'd have to be 34.
And it wouldn't be 34 at the peak.
No, no, but Edgewater's 34, however they do the math, you know, for the roofing.
And then, the 14 feet of elevator accommodations is not included in board height, another 14 feet. But that would really help me to know, like, I was glad to find out that bulk fuel tanks are 40 feet high.
Okay.
Okay, that's a real concrete, I can see it, picture it, 40 feet high, but the SMIC tent just seems taller, visually. So that'd be really nice to help visually understand what we're talking about.
So Chair Chriswell, I just want to ask administration, do we already have a topic list on what we're having the discussion with the council? Is that?
For the joint work session?
Yeah.
Yeah, we mentioned the marijuana establishment regulations and building height, and ADUs was on that list, but in our mind, that would be the last of the priorities.
That might be an introductory, educational thing with the council, since it's such a new critter?
If we have time.
Yeah.
Well, when we get to that topic, we can discuss what's on it. Anything more on, on building height?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, part of the reason we are doing this is to help alleviate the housing crisis, and I know nobody wants a 50-foot building next to them, or I really don't either. But I think we need to try to find places, because I know, like, yes, at some level it will increase density, but for every thing we do build, it incentivizes people to live downtown versus living outside of town, and, which also will definitely increase traffic, because nobody's crazy enough to bike in every day from mile eight. And I think, you know, Seward is not a static entity, no city is. Zoning tries to make it be one, but that's not how cities have been since their inception. And so I think we need to do all these little things and chip away at the problem, including building height, including ADUs, et cetera, to allow for a city to evolve over time. And it's not going to be the same city. It's not the same city it was thirty years ago. That wasn't the same city from thirty years prior to that. So it's not an overnight change, it's an incremental change. And I think we should pursue it, even if you might not want a fifty-foot skyscraper in your backyard.
Well, you raise an interesting point that if we want to address housing, this would be an overlay for apartment buildings. Because no one's going to build a fifty-foot house, right? This would be for an apartment building. But most of our input was from hotel people who wanted bigger, yeah, bigger height. So that doesn't help our housing very much at all.
We'll take into consideration the survey that the city put out, and the majority of people there said three-story.
But did they realize what three-story means?
That's what I want to know because three-story to them, to everybody in town, I think is what we already have.
Right, right. When I did the research on how big, you know, how big is it? And maybe I mentioned it at our previous work session. But a story is generally considered to be around nine to ten feet high. A two-story building is around twenty to twenty-five feet high. A three-story building is around thirty-three to forty feet high. And five-fifty feet is five stories high or a four-story building like hotels, apartment complexes are more buildable. After four stories, it's more stringent relationships, but that's good to know. It's about ten feet per story, about ten feet. Lots to think about.
Seward does have limited land space and going up is, seems the most logical in addressing our housing issue. I hate to see vacated hotels half the year, that's not good. But then, on the other hand, with more supply of hotel rooms, you have lesser need for.
B and Bs.
B and Bs.
Not necessarily, just means more people can come. It puts a higher pressure on everything else.
Yeah.
Than we already can sustain.
But are we going to put a close sign at the highway in Seward on the summertime or what? I mean, we know that people are going to come and they need to be accommodated as well as the employees and those who accommodate them, so.
So delicate balance to maintain our sense of who we are, our identity as a small town, and yet welcome visitors because it is such an incredible place and accommodate everyone that wants to live here.
Well, I think that's the purpose why we're having zoning overlays, to be able to keep that as a maybe controlled growth in those areas if we have to go a little higher because. But if we have those areas of those overlays, then we can protect the areas that keep the small-town feel and stuff like that. So we might be able to come to a compromise.
Chair Criswell, if I may, I did find the building height on those few buildings that you requested, so.
Awesome.
For the commission and the public listening, the Alaska Sea Life Center is just at about forty feet tall. Then without doing more extensive research, just from the resolutions that I found, I believe the two structures over in SMIC that these resolutions are referring to are there is a Conex building structure over there that I think this resolution is referring to that is forty-six feet. And then the tent structure is sixty-five feet.
Oh, that's huge.
Thank you, that's really helpful, very helpful.
So fifty would be significantly less than a ten.
It would, and a little bit more than that Conex, which is really high.
Good looking there, you see those boats parked in there, you see that that wide is, yeah.
That's really interesting. And the Sea Life Center, forty feet. It's a tall, tall arc.
Do you know who, what entity did the presentation on that potential area up on the bench as far as developing a subdivision up there? It was an animated presentation?
Yeah, I believe it was R and M.
Oh, R and M did that, okay. They could probably help us with some overlay technology and 3D look of what a forty or fifty-foot structure would look like in a certain area, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that might be helpful.
Right, that's what I was thinking, you felt like you were flying because they took you up there and flew you around. Yeah, interesting. Well, can we move on? Do we have enough to go on here? The next item on our agenda is discuss the work session topics for Tuesday, January 21st. Municipal lands inventory and management plan, provide recommendations for city-owned land that could be used for housing. Does that sound like a good topic for the next work session?
Yeah, is that going through the yearly municipal land inventory or just discussing picking a bit out of it?
So it would just be looking specifically for city-owned property that would be appropriate for housing development? But whether that's, you know, it could be of all varieties, you know, selling, just selling property to private owners to develop or all the way up to, you know, giving land to a developer with the stipulations that a certain type of housing be developed there, whether that's apartment buildings, four-plex, you know. So looking at any of those options with city land where, if there are any city land where that would be appropriate.
So under our, under the mini-plan list for lands for disposal, there aren't very many, just a few. So when I'm thinking of going through the mini-plan, like the one I found was across the bay, thirty acres. I don't think there's going to be a lot of city-owned land suitable for housing. So that might be a really short discussion.
I don't think there is. I remember last time going through that.
Right, there's not much.
Do you want to tack something else on? I mean, it probably would be good to add just a last-minute prep for the joint work session.
Yeah.
Yeah, the height.
Like format-wise, present the information.
Yeah, that's right before the meeting with council, so. Let's discuss height restrictions more.
So yeah, I can.
Maybe we can get some more visuals.
We can bring the polished draft of the marijuana code for you to have one more look at that. And then we can bring the written, our proposed written statement of what the commission would want to present to the council for building height and then you can hash that out too.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
With the mari, yeah, that sounds good.
And did we have our priorities on that with the council?
Mm-hmm, and so that would be part of the work session as well as discussing our priorities.
Right, so under P and Z priorities, could you bring back what our previous priority list was? It's really nice to keep that foremost. And bring forward the municipal land use plan priorities at the end. Where the things, the next steps. I think that'd be part of the priorities.
Yeah.
We can just kind of combine A and B here. Okay, so from what I gather, the next work session on Tuesday, January 21st, will include providing recommendations for city-owned land that could be used for housing from the municipal lands inventory management plan. Will add the building height discussion and will add the marijuana code and P and Z priorities that will include last year's priorities and municipal land use plan priorities and anything else that we think is. And we can discuss all that at the work session prior to our meeting with the council. Does that sound good? But should be enough things to occupy our time. Shout out to our principal.
Yes, set it up.
Any other thoughts on what you want to discuss at the work session? Is that enough stuff? I think so. Okay. Informational items and reports. Reminder of meetings, we have a work session on Tuesday, January 21st at 6:00 PM in council chambers at City Hall. The joint work session with city council is on Monday, January 27th at 5:30 PM in council chambers. And our next regular meeting is on Tuesday, February 4th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. And that brings us to other items, we don't have any other items. And next is citizens' comments, there are no citizens. And next is commission and administration comments. Anyone would like to comment?
I would, if I can go ahead and recycle here. The, I'd like to thank everybody for having, willing to do differing comments and thoughts on things like this because I think it brings people around, that's what our purpose is as a commission. Because if we're all lockstep to the same idea, then we're all sort of single-minded, which it can be good at some sometimes. But, you know, but being able to come from very different reference points throughout this community, we've got to be able to effectively represent everybody as well as, you know, what's the best thing for this town. So I want to thank everybody for that. And of course, administration and the clerk's office are putting up with all of us. It's like herding cats, you know. That's all I can say. I have six cats, so it's good to say.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners want to comment?
I'll just thank administration for all the hard work, you know, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, I want to thank administration too and Stacy for following up on our directives to get these parks, keep on marching towards that. And thank the commission as well for all of our work. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the diversification of ideas we have here at the table. And I think it's nice that we feel free to push those out and not be shy about sharing. If we're all thinking alike, someone's not thinking, right? So again, I appreciate the staff and you all keeping things in front of us and moving forward just to make this community a better place. And happy new year all, yeah, thank you.
For the record, I'd like to know how the racquetball tournament went.
The city swept the podium. Your gold champion here, Courtney.
Bravo.
And I got second, beating out Russ White from Parks and Rec for, we got third place.
Nice, wow, you definitely cleaned up.
Yeah.
They play hard or they work hard?
They work first.
You're not working hard enough.
Right. No, I'll say for my comment, I feel like at the end of these meetings, you always thank us and I should thank you all for your hard work. Like I remember my first, my month on the job, we didn't have a meeting for like a month or two because of lack of quorum. And then trying to catch up with all these different priorities. And so I feel like especially lately, we're tackling some harder issues and I think they're really good conversations. And I just want to thank Courtney and Claire today for doing the final touches of today's meeting. Today was my daughter's first birthday, so I did not come into work until just before the meeting. So I got to spend some time with her, so, yeah, thank you all.
Claire?
I'd like to thank you all, as well as a good happy new year. January two was a year since I've been working with the safe Seward and I've learned a lot. The, what do they call it? Yesterday handing out bags at Safeway was fun, you know, just seeing people, familiar faces and encouraging them to take the surveys.
That'd be awesome. You guys are awesome. That's great outreach.
It's huge.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, you may.
I would just like to encourage the admin to try to get these things out to the public. And I know we have a city Facebook page and I don't know if that helps, but it would be, and Seward announcements just so that we could get more public engagement in some of these issues that we're maybe not so sure about if we're fully representing the community. And so I'd just like to see more of that. We don't know, we don't have a newspaper, it's just really hard to know where to put that information out there so people can see it, so.
It's tough. Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm very pleased to see that we are accomplishing some really important things. And this meeting today has crossed out three things from the municipal land use plan, which has been in works for a long time. And I just feel really good about being on this commission and accomplishing positive things with all of your support and different ideas, it's very important. Thanks to administration, very much. And clerk's office, thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, with that, I call this meeting adjourned at 8:43.
All right, it's done.